It's 5:30 and we'll call our meeting to order at the Aberdeen City Council for Monday, September the 17th. Roll call, please. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye.
Legitlegions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes.
So moved.
Motion, Rux, and second by Lunsman. All those in favor, if there are no changes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. I'm going to jump ahead here to the consent calendar because we have two people who are here related to the taxi issues in the consent calendar and rather than make them wait through other stuff that's going to take a while, they've signed up for open forum. Don't anticipate any further discussion of this on the consent calendar. It usually doesn't. If there is, you'd be welcome to speak then or any time. So with that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of items A, B, and C in the consent calendar, including the cab drivers.
So moved.
Motion, Ronain, second by Remley. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approving those, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. So you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bringing more job and service to you guys. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 180801, expanding the number of projects eligible for sales tax refund. And I would entertain a motion for final adoption.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Bunsonus, second by Ronain. It's my understanding that there is an amendment motion related to this?
Yes, there is.
Somebody make it and we'll go from there.
I'd like to propose the amendment and if Ron could put it up, please.
Did you move it? Did you move it? Second, if he moved it.
Okay. Good. You got that, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, do I need to read this or just give a highlight for what we're trying to do?
Go ahead and just give a highlight and then I'll explain the amendment.
Okay. Basically, on the amendment is to change to, again, to 100%, but anything over the 100% would come from the third penny sales tax.
Over the 50%.
Over the 50%. I'm sorry. Thank you. Over the 50% to come from the third penny sales tax. And that's on the smaller projects. And I think Ron could probably explain it a little bit better on what our actual, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, councilman. I was asked to propose an amendment that dealt with a different percentage for the smaller projects. Recall that 50-93A1 is for the large projects as currently existing. 50-93A2 is for what would be the smaller projects. And the amendment is to the first sentence of section 50-97, which would read now that the council by resolution may determine a refund up to 50% of the sales and use taxes paid to the city with respect to a project approved under section 50-93A1 and up to 100% of the sales and use tax paid to the city with respect to a project approved under section 50-93A2. And there would be an additional change to the second sentence to read, "For a refund approved under section 50-93A2, the difference of the percentage over 50% may only be paid as an allocation from the special sales tax imposed under section 50-77." And what that change would mean is that as to a refund approved by the council for a smaller project under 50-93A2, a portion of that refund would come from a refund of the sales tax paid. The other portion of the refund would come from the, essentially, the promotion fund. And the language there is important because it talks about the difference of the percentage. So it's difficult to provide the example, but if the percentage approved, for example, was 75% of a small project, refund of a small project, 50% of that 75% would come, could come from the sales tax. The other 25% of that 75% could come from the promotion fund as an allocation. I hope that's clear because it's certainly clear in my mind.
That would be, it will come from the third penny. That could. My understanding, anyway.
It may only be paid as an allocation, as an allocation from the special sales tax. So the promotion fund, you're right.
Does that cover your explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Mike or Rod, do you feel compelled to comment on this or do you have any objections to any of this that you'd like made known to the council or?
No. No reaction.
Okay. All right. With that, then I would open it up for a discussion of the council on the amendment.
I'll take a shot at it. And I think what the council needs to understand is that anything over 50% comes from the promo fund. So this will need to be, in my opinion, a line item on the promo fund every year. This is a budgeted item. We just can't not recognize it in the promo fund. I don't know what that amount is, but we're going to have to come up with some kind of allocation for the promo fund. I would rather see anything over 50% come from the RLF fund and have the promo fund fund the Aberdeen Development Corp. like we've done in the past. I think this is maybe a compromise to that. The reason I'd like to see that is because I think the, then the Aberdeen Development Corp. then has the authority to make these decisions right away and not have to wait on us to see if we're going to fund whatever level we're going to fund. Because remember, this is up to every percentage. It's not a guarantee. But obviously, they feel like that we're going to get this a little better than three months of, or two months of conversation on this particular issue. And so I think we could do this better and give them more authority, but there doesn't seem to be any takers to that. So this is what is being proposed. The important piece is we cannot let this, you know, this recognize that there is a cost to the first penny with these projects. Because we put these into the estimate every year. And now we are potentially stripping them out. And so there's an effect. And so that's why we came up with this is because I think we can deal with the 50% out of the first penny, but we needed a home for the second 50% or up to 50%. So that's where this comes from. But be aware, when it comes to promo fund time, we'll have this to consider.
And as, Mike, as you've told us, as seldom as this comes up, if we'd get a line item in the promo fund, we might only have to do it once. This has come up so seldom in the past, anyway, so it could just stay there.
Can I make another point? I'm not, I'm not sure it's going to, I'm wondering if this is a trend that's happening. I'm not sure, but if we were compared to Brookings, and if we compare it to Brookings, if you look at their budget, they have budgeted in their first penny, in their second penny, all kinds of money for this job creation piece. They get their funding a little different than we do, so they have that ability. They have municipal utilities, which gives them about $2 million every year. They have municipal liquor. They have municipal landfill. That gives them over $3 million to work with that we don't have. We don't have the option to have. Or we might have the option, but we've chosen in the past not to go there. So I'm, you know, and they have, they've spent some dollars in these areas, so, you know, maybe that's a good trend that would happen to us. And I just don't want to downplay that this is just going to be on an occasional basis. I hope it happens quite often, but we have to have the funds there to pay for it. And also, we have to stop comparing ourselves to other communities because we're not on an equal footing to Brookings by far. And so, and that's where we were compared to with this one manufacturer. So anyway, I think this works. Hope it's used often. And that creates a problem for us. Where are we going to get the funds out of the third promo fund?
Other counties?
Problem to have.
Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just clarify one thing, I don't think that there's any restrictions on the first 50% that has to come from the first penny. I think the first 50% would come half from the first penny and half from the second penny. Anything over that 50% then would come from the promotion fund. I think that's the intent of the amendment, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So how did we handle it with AGP?
Half comes from the first penny, half comes from the second penny.
Didn't, that didn't change with anything that we've done here?
Okay.
Other questions, comments on the amendment? Clint?
I'm a little uncomfortable with taking it out of the promo fund because I'm like Dave. I hope this small project part, even at 50%, is used often and that it is used to good purposes. But we have never, in our existence of me sitting on this council, have shown a lot of restraint, except on a couple of occasions, on not spending or even deficit spending the promo fund. And if it is used often, let's say 100 grand a year, who are we going to cut? Because we're making these projections in July and we may get that money coming out the next year in May. And then how are we going to make those changes? Well, we're taking it from the first and second penny sales tax anyway to make it home, unless we're going to tell people they aren't going to get their money and some of those people in the room today. So to me, this kind of paints a slippery slope of, yeah, this sounds good and it may not be used that often, but let's say the Development Corp. wants to come back and need their RLF fund replenished. Because they've done what we wanted them to do, loan that money out to spur economic development, and we've had to do it in the past. Now we won't have the resources to do it unless we're taking from the first and second penny. So to me, I'm going to vote against this because I think the third penny is, you know, we spend all of it and to a lot of good purposes. Northerns here, BMX track, BMX racing, Boys and Girls Club. And when do we start making decisions that really may affect our community if this is used as often as I hope it would be?
Oh, by, I could be wrong, but by my calculations, if we would do 100,000 in this in a given year, that would be the equivalent of $200 million worth of projects. I'd be thrilled to pull 100,000 out of our promotion fund for $200 million worth of projects. We'd find it somewhere else.
Well, if I could, oh, sorry.
And I can appreciate both sides and I know this is kind of the compromise that we were trying to get to give them something to work with without trying to balance this. And it's obviously not an easy balance. And I think I believe, Dave and I talked about this before, is that the RLF fund would have been the place that I would have loved to have put the money toward and let them figure it out on their own. But this was kind of a compromise in order to get the money available. Obviously, we have to make the decision every year and I agree. I've only been through the promo fund twice and interesting at best, but we're going to have to make it our priority to put money aside. And for these small businesses coming in and the amount of money, I think Mayor said it best, is that I don't think we get to that 100. I hope we do, but if, I think if we're restraintful and make ourselves aware of what we need to do, we'll put the money aside and we'll do the thing that we can do the best.
I am, I'm not opposed to writing a $25,000 line item to put in the RLF fund and let Mr. Bakarney handle it. You know, he can guarantee them that much money right there. And then he can come to us for just the other 50%. I mean, we've done it in the past up to, you know, what was it, 50,000 or 100,000 a year we've given to them? 25,000 a year goes right to the RLF fund. Let them deal with it. We not only grow the fund, but he can, at the same point, sit there in the room saying, this is what I can guarantee right now. There is, I think there is some advantage to that. And then, hey, we can get the other 50%. You know, we'll go to the city council and see if we can get the other 50% for these small projects.
Rob, you had your end up.
I think others have said much of what I was going to say. I would just leave it at this. You know, Clint, I, I'm sympathetic to your comments regarding the promotion fund, but the fact of the matter is, we didn't have the votes on this council to approve this and take this out of anywhere else. And so that's why it has come down to paying it out of the promotional fund. It's important that we give the Development Corporation this tool and this is, this is what we have as votes to do today. And at some other point in time, if this doesn't look like it works, as a council, we're nimble. We can, we can make those changes and create a different mechanism.
May take longer. You know, but like I say, to me, it just comes down to, let's just keep putting money in the RLF fund, a small amount, and let them deal with it. You know, instead of us having them coming to us and determining what percentage we're going to give them, let them, if they have the money in the RLF fund to take 50% and give it, do a refund through it if they know they're going to get replenished. I mean, instead of us putting a line item, to me, that just seems simpler.
Other questions or comments on the amendment? Mark?
I don't know about anybody else, but every year when we face this promotional fund, I struggle with it every year. And this would, to me, this is a good idea to put extra money to bring new business to town. I mean, it makes perfect sense to me that promotional fund is to bring people to town. And if this is a tool that's going to work for them, let's do it. That way, it's one less decision we have to make when it comes time to.
Actually, we still have to make the decision.
For the promotional fund.
Other questions or comments on the amendment?
Yeah, I'm just not in favor of taking it out of the promotion fund. I think the, from what I've learned, is the RLF fund is available to the Development Corp. to make up these differences. And so I'm just not in favor. We struggle with the promotional fund every year and there's a lot of great organizations that do good for Aberdeen. And we slashed a lot of them this year. And I just hate to see us continue to do that. And so I'm just, I would resist taking it out of the promotion fund.
Other questions, comments? Alan?
I'm okay with it. I think, as was said, it is a true reformer promotion than some of the allotments that we've given in the past. I think it's perhaps imperfect, but satisfactory to a number of the parties involved here and is workable for now.
Other comments, questions? Well, let's do a roll call then on the amendment. Anybody with a question about the phrasing or understanding the amendment? You don't want to read it again? Carl, a roll call, please. A yes vote adopts the amendment and then that would move into consideration for the full vote. So Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
No.
Rux.
No.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Just as I got my calculator out, I think we're in the $5 million range for this most recent request. That would have been, you know, kind of a drop in the bucket out of the promotion fund when you look at it, so. Seems workable from my point of view. Discussion now on the overall motion for, and I would assume this will not be final adoption. This will be a lead up to final adoption of one more week and potentially an ongoing saga.
I have a question for Councilmember Ronain. What's his definition of nimble? What's your definition of nimble?
We're not nimble at all.
It's what Jack was.
It's what we hope to be.
I actually have an amendment to this. If you could bring it up, Ron.
I can't seem to get back onto the.
Uh-oh.
Okay, let's go this way. Let's see if that'll work. All right.
Don't know where it would work in the new language because that has changed. Oops, it's back up.
Is this it?
Yeah. Counsel by res. Yep. Basically, the amendment before you says that basically we cannot exceed for the small projects, amount of sales tax increase in the previous year. So basically, we're not going backwards in sales tax increases. And if the, now, of course, we have an extra funding source to take these from. But that is basically what my amendment says, and that's only for small projects, not the large projects.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Clint?
Basically, you know, this comes to, you know, protecting our first and second penny sales tax for the small projects and saying that they shall not exceed the increase in total sales tax revenues for the previous year. How that would work with the language we just said with the promotion fund, I am not positive. But basically, with our first and second penny sales tax, it takes the increase from the previous year and says we can't give away any more than that, which for these small projects could be, you know, still fairly good. But it basically protects our revenues from going possibly backwards in these projects, just the small ones, not the large ones.
But Clint, don't, the council by resolution still has to determine the refund. I mean, we are still in a position to vote these up or vote these down.
True.
I just don't see the need to have that language in there.
Other questions or comments on this amendment? While you're thinking about it, I do have one correction, Mayor. I could use my calculator instead of my head. When I said 200 million, I added a zero. It should have been 20 million. So I was, small exaggeration. Still substantial.
We'll get you a calculator.
Still substantial.
We'll have to get you a phone with a calculator on it.
Stop using my head and start using the machines. So Carl, do you have a succinct way to phrase this amendment for a vote?
What I have written is to amend section 50-97 to restrict refunds under section 50-93A1B to any sales tax increases in previous year.
Okay. A yes vote would do that. All those in favor, say aye.
I know. Rob made a good argument.
Those oppose, no?
No.
The motion fails. We're back to discussion of the main motion for what would amount to a reading to lead up to possible final adoption next week if we adopt this. Other discussion on the main motion. If there is none, Carl, then roll call vote on the motion for advancement through one more week here.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, as we've already done, the consent calendar and ordinance to lease airport property for FBO hangar areas.
Do we have one other item in new?
Oh, all I did was skip the 2019 budget.
Yeah.
We need a motion for a second reading of the 2019 budget. Motion, Bunsonus, and second by Johnson. Are there any amendments to the 2019 budget at this time? Hearing none. Carl, roll call to approve and adopt the budget and send it on to the county.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. So now, ordinance 180902. Ron, is this you?
This is me. Thank you, Mayor. This is our standard airport, or I'm sorry, city lands ordinance that we have to go through when we are approving leases of city lands for more than one year. The explanation is in the, is in the council action request. And this has to do with hangar areas for the fixed base operators out at the airport. There was a revision to those to permit them to hang, or lease their airport hangars in conjunction with their net ground leases. And that's what the ordinance change would permit, along with approval of the new lease.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, and second by Bunsonus. Questions on what this is doing? If there are none, roll call, please, Carl, to approve ordinance 180902.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is item B, Resolution 180801, a resolution to vacate public right-of-way for 15th Avenue. And we do have some people signed up to speak to this and will give an opportunity as it presents itself. With that, I would open up the floor for a motion on the resolution.
Mayor?
Moved.
I would like to, I would like to move that we postpone vote on the resolution for one week. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by?
Bunsonus.
Bunsonus or Rux, either one. Carl? To postpone for one week. Alan, comments?
Yeah, there are, councilmembers requested data on traffic study and counts in August and with some prompting, it was provided just right at 5:30 this evening. There's some valuable information here that needs to be digested and evaluated and this will allow the time necessary to do that. There are citizens that are asking for some of this information, as well as curiosity around the table here. So a one-week delay, I think, is our due diligence, the least we can do.
Other questions or comments?
I wonder if it would be appropriate to ask the university if that is going to adversely affect their plans.
Would waiting a week be a problem, Dr. Don?
One week is okay, but we need to have our plans done for this project by November 1st. So each week is precious in terms of design time.
Okay. Now, there's not a lot of complicated information in the traffic totals that we got, so a week should be enough for us. Other questions or comments on the motion to table? Since we are eight, instead of nine, it would take a majority vote. It would take five positive votes to approve the motion to table. Roll call, please. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. We have typically accepted each other's reasons, not excuses, reasons for desiring tabling, so this shouldn't in any way indicate to you that we're still not excited about your project. So thanks for being here. We'll make you come again next week, I guess.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a property tax abatement for 811 South 4th Street. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet before, you'll see that the county forwarded a request for an abatement for a piece of property because there was a garage that was actually added to adjacent properties. It should only have been in the one. So the value of that garage is being removed from the property that did not have the garage. Its tax amount is $69.3 cents total. City share is $18.94.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Bunsonus, second by Lunsman. Questions on this? for 15th Avenue. And we do have some people signed up to speak to this, and we'll give them an opportunity as it presents itself. With that, I would open up the floor for a motion on the resolution.
Mayor?
Moved.
I would like to.
Sorry.
I would like to move that we postpone vote on the resolution for one week. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by?
Bunsonus.
Bunsonus or Rux, either one. Carl, to postpone for one week. Ellen, comments?
Yeah, there are, council members requested data on traffic study and counts in August, and with some prompting, it was provided just right at 5:30 this evening. There's some valuable information here that needs to be digested and evaluated, and this will allow the time necessary to do that. There are citizens that are asking for some of this information, as well as curiosity around the table here. So, a one-week delay, I think, is our due diligence, the least we can do.
Other questions or comments?
I wonder if it would be appropriate to ask the university if that is going to adversely affect their plans.
Would waiting a week be a problem, Dr. Downs?
One week is okay, but we need to have our plans done for this project by November 1st. So, each week is precious in terms of design time.
Okay. Now, there's not a lot of complicated information in the traffic totals that we got, so a week should be enough for us. Other questions or comments on the motion to table? Since we are eight, instead of nine, it would take a majority vote, it would take five positive votes to approve the motion to table. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a property tax abatement for 811 South 4th Street. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet before, you'll see that the county forwarded a request for an abatement for a piece of property, because there was a garage that was actually added to adjacent properties that should only have been in the one. So, the value of that garage is being removed from the property that did not have the garage. Its tax amount is $69.30. Total city shares, $18.94.
Move approval.
Second. Motion Bunsonus, second by Lunsman. Questions on this? All in favor of approving that abatement, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. And we are presented tonight under item D, with a possible approval of proposed fiscal year 2019 budget for the communications center. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Council has been asked to comply with the requirement of the intergovernmental agreement that the county and city have regarding the 911 communications center. A provision in that, in that agreement requires that the Brown County Communications Council present to the two governing bodies their proposed budget. And for fiscal year 2019, a proposed budget has been presented in the amount of $1.239,815. And the request is that the council approve that budget for the 911 center. I would advise the council that the City of Aberdeen has set aside, I believe, $300,000 in its 2019 budget for its responsibilities towards the center. Moved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, second by Bunsonus. Questions on this?
The primary funding for this comes out of the 911 surcharge on phone lines.
That's my understanding, yes.
I would, as well as looking at the budget for this, commend the county for their work and fitness into their budget, and certainly commend the sheriff and his deputies for the way they operate the communications center. There was a time when it was not nearly as efficiently and well-run as it is, has been now for some time. So, we appreciate their work. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, then, of approving their motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The next item, Carl has some bicycles to surplus. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this request came from the police department, but they asked me to put it together. So, being the nice guy I am, I sure did. The School for the Blind and Visually Impaired asked if they had any spare bicycles. They went through their inventory and found four that the school thought would be acceptable for some of their students to use. So, with the council's permission, if we would surplus these four bicycles, and then donate them to the School for Blind and Visually Impaired, it would meet all the statutory requirements for that.
Motion Ronain, second by Bunsonus. Questions, anyone? All in favor, then, say aye.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. There is a question here. Let me address it to Chief McNeil. Do we have any sort of a policy when a bike is abandoned and we put it into our holding area as surplus? A period of time where we allow that individual, the original owner, to come back? I noticed that two of these were taken into inventory on August 8th, barely a month ago. I'm just a little concerned that those same people might be interested a little bit later. I don't know the situations, but maybe you can comment.
Yeah, so basically, the majority of the bikes that we take in are found, you know, pieces of property.